All right, good evening, everyone. I think we can get started. It's pretty much, you know, seven, maybe a few minutes, maybe a minute before, so nobody will complain if we start a minute early. So first of all, my name is Harry Schofield. I'm the Chair of the Narragansett Town Residents Association currently, and I want to welcome all of you in the audience. Thank you for coming. I want to welcome and thank the questionnaires that are here and the timekeeper, and of course, a special welcome for the candidates, and we thank them for their participation, their public service, and their willingness to serve. So with that, and before I continue, I'd like to just remind everyone to please silence your cell phones here. Now I'm thinking, did I silence mine? Let me start by introducing the people from the various sections of town who are going to have asked questions. So I'm going to start with Ron Catanzaro, who represents the Pier, Dina DeRusso from Point Judith, Diane Peretti from Briggs Farm, Guy Lancelotti from Canachet Farms, and Ron Gilchrist from Eastwood Look. And Christina Florio is our timekeeper. So she's the boss. So when the ding goes off, the ding goes off. So what we want to do is get this going as quickly as possible so we can get into the questions. And the first thing we're going to do is allow the candidates 30 seconds to just briefly introduce themselves, give a word or two of their background and why they're running. And we're going to start this round with Win Hames.
You'll always start with me. My name is Win Hames. 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
All right. My name is Win Hames. I live at 30 Wood Avenue in Narragansett. I've been in town for 68 years. I've served on a variety of committees and things throughout the town. Very pleased with my involvement with the town up to this point. I don't know if I'll be pleased after this. I have run for office several times. My kids graduated from Narragansett High School. How much time do I got left?
Five seconds.
I'll pass.
Okay. Ryan Toralde, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Toralde, and I want to be your next town councillor. I love this town. I want to represent its future. I am a Boy Scout turned Eagle Scout of Troop 2 Narragansett. I lifeguarded on our beaches. I have volunteered with the Narragansett Lions Club since I was 11, am now a full-fledged member. I'm a project manager by trade, which has taught me to surround myself with the smartest people in the room. So in office, I will bring together commissions of members of our community who can represent us all and lead us to a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Donna Vignelli, you're next.
Hi, I'm Donna Vignelli. I'm a year-round resident living in Briggs Farm with my daughter, my two beautiful granddaughters. After coming to Narragansett, every weekend, every school vacation, every summer for eight years, I was able to fulfill my greatest dream 10 years ago when I retired here. I'm a retired teacher. I taught 35 years in the Waterbury School District. During that time, I was elected President of the Waterbury Teachers' Association, where I represented 1,500 members, negotiated two, three-year contracts. I worked closely with the Connecticut Education Association, lobbying for high-quality education. I was...
I told you, she's tough. Alex Menzies is next.
Good evening. My name is Alex Menzies, and I am a born and raised lifelong Narragansett resident. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Narragansett School Committee and have served the last four years. I am running for town council because I believe we have to do better as a town and as humans. I believe we need to listen to each other more and treat each other with respect. It is okay to disagree. It is healthy to express differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we must move forward. It is my hope that I will be able to bring our community together back to a center so that we can focus on resolving a lot of important issues for our future. Thank you.
Jill Lawler is next.
Good evening. Thank you to the Residents Association for putting us on, for everyone attending, and for those at home watching us. My name is Jill Lawler, and I'm running for my fourth term for the town of Narragansett to be a town councillor. A little about me. I grew up in Connecticut, went to undergrad at UConn with a degree in psychology. I have an MBA from Sacred Heart University. After college, I started my career in the pharmaceutical industry, where I stayed and actually traveled around the world and traveled around the States and ended up here in Rhode Island. I've been in...
I know it's tough, folks, but we've got a lot to cover. Rupert Friday is next.
Hi, I'm Rupert Friday. My family's lived in Narragansett's North End for 24 years. We love our town's community and natural beauty. My career has been working in public service to protect the environment, promote effective community planning. I've had the privilege of working with many communities, facilitating civil discussions about contentious issues and building consensus on a vision for their future. I want to use my experience and lessons learned to help our town seize our opportunities.
Steve Ferandi is next.
Thank you, Harry. Thanks for the group for putting this on. It's a special event. I'd like to start by saying that my family has roots in Narragansett from 1945, when our uncle bought a house on Middle Road. And I call it a legacy house now because we've all moved down over the years, one by one. So my sister and my brother are all here. And I've always been about quality of life and collaborating with all the neighborhoods in town to try and get some things done. And I think the quality of life is one of the most important issues in the town. And I'm the council now, and I'm running for another term to kind of, you know, complete what I had started.
Okay. Jason Colonies is next.
This is as quick as pickleball. All right. My name is Jason Colonies. I have a doctorate in education and leadership. I volunteered on multiple committees for the town. As Executive Director at the Education Exchange, I lead efforts to help adult learners become lifelong learners and advance their careers. My wife and I are raising two daughters, nine and 10, who are going through the Narragansett school system, and I'm committed to ensuring our schools remain well-resourced. I also recognize the need to balance Narragansett residents, students, and tourist economies while preserving key assets like the beach and Narrow River.
Good job. Eva? Eva Dzerzinski is next.
My name is Eva Dzerzinski. I'm a URI grad, times two. I purchased my house from Mr. Durkin 26 years ago. So I'm very proud to be a Narragansett resident. I ran for town council in 2020 because I wanted to unify the town and ensure the will of the people was followed. I'm seeking my third term, and I believe I have the experience that residents trust. I'm running for town council because we are in a frightening potential point of no return with investor landlords buying up our town and driving up house prices.
Thank you. Jim Durkin is next. Last, I should say. Last but not least.
My name is James Patrick Durkin, Jim Durkin, or commonly Jimmy Durkin. I have spent my entire life in Narragansett with school, work, and pleasure. There is no place that I would rather call home. At no time have I ever felt the lack of community. I believe my habit of surrounding myself with positive-thinking people has attributed to this. That is why I'm running with my endorsed slate, and I hope you will agree. My website, workingwithdurkin.com, will give you a better picture of me as a political, business, and family person.
Okay. All right, Jim. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. I know they were brief and hard to do in 30 seconds, but I appreciate all the efforts on behalf of all 10 of you. So just to get into the bulk of the program here, the rules here tonight are that there'll be two rounds of questions. There'll be five questions in each round, and each candidate will answer each of the five questions in each round. And the first round of questions, we're allowing 90 minutes for the answer. Should be easy for them after 30 seconds. I'm sorry, 90 seconds. Yes, 90 seconds. 90 seconds. We'll be here all night. 90 seconds. And the second round of questions is a semi-lightning round, which we're allowing 60 seconds maximum. We're looking for short, quick answers to those questions. And so we're going to start this off. There's no audience participation. Again, Christina here, our timekeeper, will continue to be strictly adhering to the time limits. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ron Catanzaro to ask the first question. And he goes, Win Hames.
Thank you. Win, the first question is, the fastest-growing Narragansett rental segment is short-term rentals. The town staff reported 1,100 short-term rental registrations, the largest number of any Rhode Island municipality, and 21% of all short-term rentals statewide. Our current town council passed an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals to improve the quality of our neighborhoods. While there is litigation pending regarding the minimum number of rental days and licensing requirements, the bulk of the ordinance is likely to survive. If elected, would you uphold the current ordinance? If not, how would you change it? And you can all turn your first question over.
Yeah, you can turn the question over now. Round one, question one. Win, you're first.
Thank you. I like being first. Well, this has been a problem since, when did I move to town? 1956? It's probably been a problem after that. You want to put my mic on? I don't...
It's on. Just pull it closer.
Hello? 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 All right. I'd like to work, I'd like to propose, or... Because this is intertwined with a lot of other things going on throughout the town. It's... Hold on. The first thing I would like to do is propose doubling the exemption, homestead exemption for the people in town. I'm done?
We have 30 seconds. 25 seconds.
Well, I'm going to have to publish this in the paper then. Granting an exception to year-round renters, people who own year-round homes, extending homestead exemptions to them, allowing for first-time home buyers, combined with a 20... Okay. Time? All right. Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. If elected, I would like to repeal and replace the current ordinance, reducing it down to something like a three- or four-day rental minimum. Reason being is quite a number of tourists come into our town for weddings and special events held at the Towers at Canachet. And a week, minimum week stay, prices individuals out of coming to visit to our town. On top of that, there's a few hotels in town that would allow you to stay for one, two, three nights. There's Chair 5, there's the Atlantic House, there's the Shore House, Turtle Soup used to be. The only hotels that exist in the area exist in South Kingston. So I think this would be a good opportunity for local homeowners to continue to rent their houses out to tourists coming in for a couple of days, bring tourism dollars into our town, and I yield the rest of my time.
Donna?
Again, thank you for the question. I believe there needs to be regulation. However, I do not agree with the short-term rental as written. I think there's other ways that we can approach the number of rentals within the city, within the town. Sorry, I grew up in a city. Within the town. I think we could talk about, sit down and talk with the parties and all stakeholders and come up with a way of addressing the number of rentals, whether it's grandfathering people in or whatever other ideas that people may bring to the table. I think right now, everyone is dug, put their line in the sand. No one's willing to compromise. Everyone is like holding ground because people don't feel like they're being listened to. And I think that if people can come to the table and sit down and we discuss it, and we do that with the eye of compromise. I mean, I don't think, I think everyone knows it has to be resolved, and it can be resolved. And I think all ideas need to be on the table, and we need to talk about them. Oh, sorry, I didn't see the sign. I apologize. I have 30 seconds left. Oh, that was good. I'm good, thank you. Can I tell? I'll just tell you that I'm also the co-president of the Wayfield Rotary Club. I'll finish what I couldn't say. I'm the co-chair president of the Wayfield Rotary Club. Giving back and volunteering is really important to me.
Thank you. First and foremost, any ordinance, especially the short-term rental ordinance, needs to be supportive of Narragansett residents. And the language of the short-term rental ordinance, like many other ordinances that have come up recently and are in litigation, the language needs improvement. I feel that there were a lot of stakeholders, a lot of members within this community who were not invited to participate within those conversations. And I think we can do a better job at branching out and getting that community input. Whatever ordinance gets created, the language can always be improved. So that's one area that I think could be strengthened. Licensing requirements needs to be looked at. The number of rentals has remained pretty consistent over the last few years from the information that I've been given. But I believe that there's a balance that can be achieved here with supporting local businesses and year-round residents. I believe that by inviting the right stakeholders to the table, we can find a short-term rental ordinance that's beneficial for all members within our community. And again, at the end of the day, this is the best place in the world to live. And I believe that together, we can come up with some compromise.
Jill?
A couple of things about this question. First, the number 1,100 short-term rentals, that's not the number that Narragansett has. Narragansett does not know how many short-term rentals we have, which is one reason why we want to register them. That is the number of the state, the state has for short-term rentals in our town. And it is true, we have 21% of all short-term rentals in the town. There's a short-term rental commission that was developed by the State House. Mr. Durkin is a member. It's highly, highly heavy on investors in the commission. They see this as a source of revenue for the state. Now, all the revenue from Narragansett that comes in from taxes, from beverage and hotels, doesn't all come to us. It goes to the state and gets divvied out back to us. Currently, there is a TRO that the judge has put on for this, but the judge has not agreed with the other side on this. I want to say that this was a well-thought-out, our short-term rental ordinance, it started with the last council and it ended with this council. We hired an outside company called Granicus, which puts together short-term rental laws all around the country. And then we vetted it out with local attorneys. I'm not really quite sure why my opponents are saying that no one was invited to talk about this. We had a public hearing. We had multiple times. We've had a year, two years and a half to talk about it. So I guess people need to be aware of what's going on in their community and show up. And that's it. Thank you.
Rupert?
So I would, I support the essence of the short-term rental ordinance. It's in place. I think Narragansett needs a strong short-term rental ordinance to ensure the safety of visitors staying in the rentals, to ensure that these rentals are less disruptive to our neighborhoods and the quality of life, and to implement two recommendations of the Affordable Housing Report that came out in February prohibiting short-term rental stays of less than seven days and creating financial incentives to convert summer rentals into year-round rentals. I support the Planning Board's recommendations for changes. And there's a couple of those that were not included in the ordinance. But I also would, I also would give registration priority. And I don't know that this is actually ordinance language, but really implementation. I'd give registration priority to owner-occupied houses and to renewals that did not have any violations the previous year. I think that will increase predictability. I'd also evaluate the annual license limit based on the first-year demand. And perhaps the proposed annual reduction licenses can be achieved through attrition as licenses are not renewed. I think the Crane Report requiring the recommendation of seven days is important for affordable housing, and that was their recommendation. So I support that as well, and that's part of the ordinance.
Steve?
Thank you. First of all, I would uphold the ordinance, and I would go forward with it the way it is. A lot of time, energy, and effort and money through the town has gone through this out. We've hired an attorney. We've had our own solicitors look at it. Last council looked at it, didn't do anything with it. It was kind of at the end of their term. So this council picked it up. And this isn't a new phenomenon. This is happening all over the country. This short-term rental thing is hurting the affordable housing issues in a lot of different towns. It's, you know, in this town, houses fill up with students and short-term renters. And a lot of times, they're acting like a hotel. You know, they come in on a Friday, switch them in and out on a Saturday, then on a Sunday. So I think it's about time that this council had the courage to do something about this. And I really think that it's going to be a good thing. It gets endorsed, you know, if there's some tweaks to be done after it's in, then I think we can look at that. Thank you.
All right. Jason?
So we've been walking around a lot and knocking on doors, and I'm not hearing people like, I'm not hearing people wanting this type of ordinance. It's not what I'm hearing out there. What I think we should do is look at it again, invite stakeholders to the table. What I keep hearing is that they haven't been invited to the table, and that we should review all of it, maybe repeal and replace it, maybe amend it, whatever we need to do to make it inclusive to the entire community. And we have to come to some kind of compromise because if we don't, we're just going to keep going back and forth and back and forth like a pickleball court. And we need to stop that. We need to get together. Thank you.
Eva?
Thank you. I like speaking this position because Council Lawler and Council Ferandi covered many of the points, as did Mr. Friday, some of the issues with this. And I support it. Obviously, I think everybody knows my stance on this. I was on the last council that was really trying to spearhead this initiative. And, you know, we did have stakeholder input, and we did try to compromise. And then we did have a version that went out there that didn't have the days limit. However, I'm a scientist. I like data. We got experts in the field to help us. We had the Crane Report on affordable housing. We have an affordable housing issue in this town. And the recommendation was to have a seven-day limit. So that's where that came from. So I don't know, but all the people that I've been talking to are supportive of a seven-day limit. And that doesn't mean you can't rent your house for three days. It just means you can't have that transgency of like people in and out. So if you're renting the house, it's for the week, whether they stay there for three days or not. So that's the point a lot of people are missing. But again, I support this initiative. I was really proud of the work we did. As Jill said, we did hire outside legal counsel. We worked diligently on this. And I know a really great location for a hotel, if anyone's looking, and that's Galilee. And that's something we need to fight for as well.
Jim?
Hi. So, you know, Narragansett broke off from South Kingston, you know, turn of the century. And there was more hotel rooms in Narragansett than there were people at that time. So historically, Narragansett's always been like a beach town, a tourist town. I'm not even sure how big URI was back then, and I certainly wasn't here. But when I was here as a child, I remember the old pier, and I remember the old hotels that were there along the road from Ocean Road to the Green Inn. We used to go for buffets at the Green Inn, but that burnt down. They all burnt down, and they weren't replaced with other hotels. So the same amount of people are still coming here, and the cottages sprouted up, and that's what happened. For people who couldn't really afford to have that summer home, they were able to build a house, rent it for a little while, stay in it for a little while, and then rent it again, I guess, in the wintertime. And then a lot of those people, and I see a lot of them in this room, eventually retired here and created a life here. Now, some of those people are happy living here, and some of those people aren't. They're, but, you know, that's the way it's all developed. Now, I, my model at Durkin is still the old-fashioned way. We do seven-day, seven-night rentals. We do do three-night rentals for holiday weekends. So I feel...
All right. Thank you, Jim. We're going to thank all of you for the, you know, answers on round one. We're going to move now to round two. And Dina DeRusso from Point Judith gets to ask this question.
So we're starting with Ryan?
Ryan.
Yep, starting with Ryan. This is question number two. You'll turn your paper over after I read the question. Thank you. On September 3rd, the town council strengthened our existing unruly gathering ordinance to give the municipal court the discretion to order a fine of $500 in community service for each person in violation of that ordinance. The ordinance is also now consistent with the town's short-term rental ordinance, which states that a second serious offense shall result in the revocation of the rental registration certificate for the following year. If elected, would you uphold this ordinance? If not, how would you change it?
Okay, Ryan, you're first.
Thank you for the question. Bluntly, I would uphold the ordinance. We need respectful people in this town. And if people are not being respectful, we need to hold them accountable. More so, we need responsible landlords, such that if you are renting out to an unruly house that incurs an offense one year, followed by another, either the same or the following, you should not be allowed to rent the next year. I think that is more than fair. So in short, I would not, I would uphold the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Donna?
Thank you. I totally believe that we need to have an ordinance. We need to have clear expectations of what we expect renters coming in or students coming in. And what residents, residents are entitled to have a quality of life living next door to some people coming in. So I believe, as a former teacher, that there needs to be expectations and consequences. And I believe that they have to be consequences that can be enforced. And if you just, like the child, unruly child, if you continue to make threats, make threats, make threats, nothing's going to happen. You need to be able to have something that you can enforce. I don't like, and I would uphold some ordinance, some type of ordinance. And I believe, and I'm sorry, I really don't know much about this ordinance, so I can't speak directly to this one, but I do support something. I think the problem is, and what I've been hearing from people, is that there are really good students, there are really good tourist visitors who come here. And I believe some landlords and residents who own a second home next door to them, they're good landlords, and they feel like everybody's been painted with a broad brush. And I think that's what is dividing people. And I think there's the people who know they're good landlords, and they do what they're supposed to do. So yes, I believe the culture needs to be that you, there is... Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah. Again, I think Donna made a great point when she was talking about, you know, the need for an ordinance and having clear expectations. At the end of the day, we can come up with all of these ordinances, but if the language isn't clear, enforcement is downright very difficult to follow. And, but with this one in particular, it makes a lot of sense. You know, the residents are first and foremost the most important thing in this town that we support. And, you know, I'm in favor of this, of this ordinance and cracking down on serious offenses because, again, we need to support our year-round residents, and this is just one way in which we can show that support.
Jill?
Well, I'm glad everybody likes it because it was a motion that I sponsored, and I love it. It's, what this really is doing is it's going to take the bad apples in town and really charge them. As Dina explained, now we have the ability, on the first go-around of the sticker, to find every single person, not just the people that were home that night of the party, but anybody on that lease $500, as well as the investor themselves, the landlord. The additional portion about having some community service is also involved. And if, when the police respond, if the level of cooperation is such that is abhorrent to them, they could also ask the judge for community service. This is something we've never done before, and I think it's already gotten around. The very first week of school, there were five stickers that were given out. The very next week, there were fewer. I spoke with a community policing officer who told me that word got around very quickly about the fact that you were going to get fined immediately and you could have community service. But what I do believe is going to happen is that there'll be language written into the leases in the future once the landlords learn that, should that house get another sticker, that they won't be able to rent that property the next year. And I think that when you start hitting people in the pocketbook, they're going to become very responsive. And I think that we're going to have better cooperation from the students in the community, and that will make us all happy. Because overall, we're not trying to get rid of the students who are short-term rentals. We're trying to create a better balance so that the residents in this, in this town can have what's on their deed, the right for quiet enjoyment.
Rupert?
So a lot of what's already been said, I agree with. I would support the ordinance. And I, my brother is a landlord in Pittsburgh, and he rents to students. And he had three houses in Narragansett about 15 years ago. And even though he was making a 20% return on those houses after paying a local manager to manage them 15%, he found the rental culture in town was so bad that he dumped the market, even though he rents to students in Pittsburgh. I think, and when I talked to him about the problems here, he, his perspective is you just have some landlords who just are not being responsible members of the community, responsible neighbors. So I think, as has been discussed, this sets expectations and accountability. And I think, I think it's a good, it's a good ordinance as planned.
So signed, Jim. Hold on, Larry. Jim, we're not, there's no campaigning here, this is just the-
Just the website.
Yeah. There's no campaigning.
They understand.
All right, we ready to go again?
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Harry. Yes, I definitely would support this. I mean, the red sticker policy has a long legacy. This was actually vetted out in federal court probably 10 to 15 years ago. And that's how the whole orange sticker came about. And it was used very effectively. You know, the police, our first line of defense, they go to the party or whatever it may be. They have to determine how many people are in there. And it would be nice to have a fine on the first one if needed. And so I agree with that. And also, other times, I think the police can go there and they can find other elements, like there's underage drinking, if there's any, you know, urinating in public, you know, any other indecency or assaults, they can also fine for that. So I think it's sorely needed. It ups the ante a little bit. And, you know, it's not so much how many stickers are up there. I mean, if we have to sticker a lot of, a lot of these houses just to keep the peace, well, we need to do that. I mean, so it's not just about the number of stickers. I mean, everybody wants to say it has to reduce, I understand that. But I think it's sorely needed, and this will put another tool in the toolbox for the police officers. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
So I don't disagree with this ordinance. I think this is one of those points where that's a point of compromise with landlords, right? Like, this is something that landlords should probably consider a positive thing. Like, if you're running your property appropriately, this is probably not going to be a problem for you. And honestly, I think this type of behavior comes out at a, at a small percentage, right? So I think this is an appropriate ordinance. I think it's something that everybody should be aware of. It's a way that we can deal with situations. I'm good with it.
Eva?
Thank you. So I supported this. This is our council that passed this. So I think it's a great, great change and great ordinance. You know, our record speaks for itself on what we've tried to accomplish in this council. And, and that's to bring back balance and a quality of life. So I think it's important to implement and try ordinance that will do that very thing. And, you know, we're just looking for quality of life and balance. Thank you.
Jim?
Hi. To tell you the truth, I wasn't aware of this ordinance. So I couldn't keep track of all the ordinances that have been passed in the last couple of years. And this one, I'm not aware of. But in reading it, I don't have a problem with going along with it. But I know it's going to be another ordinance that goes to a court. And it'll be found unfair for different reasons. I don't, I don't know exactly what it would be. But if I was going to ever change that or encourage my colleagues to change it in some way so it wouldn't go to court, I would add that if the, that the penalty of not having a registration be not enforced if the landlord evicted the tenants. Because you can evict, and I had legislation passed when I was on the council that allowed you to evict tenants for major violations of the lease within the first six months of tenancy. And I was able to evict somebody before the nine months was over. So if we, if we didn't change that language in the, in the law, they could have a party right at the beginning of the year, and they could wait six months and have another party, and you couldn't do much about it.
Okay, thank you. Winn, you got to be clean up out of here.
I support this. Microphone. Time starts over now? Okay, good. I support this ordinance. Whether, most people don't know, the number of orange stickers and, and that have been handed out and disruptive houses have reduced by about 50% over the last six years due to the enforcement of our police department. But you want to tie this into short-term rental? I didn't have the chance to explain everything, but the short-term rental ordinance, I'm not in favor of the seven days. And one of the reasons, I have a neighbor who moved here about 15 years ago, elderly woman. She rents out a house, a room in her house, no more than two people. Rents it out usually for a weekend. Her taxes have tripled over the last 15 years. The only way she can support herself, her social security hasn't tripled, her retirement hasn't tripled. The only way she can support herself and keep that house is to have this short-term rental for two days. She came to me, she doesn't know what to do. She might be forced to sell her house. And if she sells her house, who's going to come in? Somebody from Connecticut is going to come in and buy it. So as far as a fine, a fine for disruptive people, I have no problems with that. But I'm not in favor of the short-term rental ordinance, again, for more reasons than just that. It also, my son runs a soccer tournament, which some of you heard, called Seaside Classic. He has 210 teams come in from across the country here to play soccer. Every single, it's a weekend. These people don't come in to rent a house for seven days. They come in-
All right, thank you, Winn. I'd just like to remind all of you not to turn the questions over until the next question is asked. Once the next question or asks the question, then you're all free to turn that page. But only turn the page once the question is asked. So we'll move on to Chair Three this time. And in this case, we're going to start the questioning with Diane Peretti. So Diane?
Here we go. The recently, is this fine? Yes?
Yeah.
The recently completed Town Beach Study includes recommendations that will necessitate increasing spending on items such as dune restoration and increased sand replenishment to preserve the beach in the face of rising sea levels and more intense storms due to climate change. This means the Beach Enterprise Fund will need to grow in order to support these increased investments. Do you favor increasing resident beach parking and admittance fees, non-resident fees, or both resident and non-resident fees so as to support these increased costs?
Okay, Donna, you got to go first this time.
Take one more minute just to look at it again, just really quickly. I know, it's a long question, sorry.
That's okay. Okay. I agree with the beach study that makes recommendations that we need to restore the dunes and increase the sand replenishment. I'm hoping that with the dredging of the Narrow River, that that sand can be used towards that replenishing the beaches. I think the beach is our jewel of the town. If we need to make sure that we have a plan to maintain that beach, yes, we're going to be hit with storms. I think we all know climate change and what just happened in Florida. And at any given point, those hurricanes could just come right up the coast, and we could be right in line. So I think we do definitely need to do everything we can to maintain our beaches. I do favor increasing beach parking. I believe that we need to look very seriously at the parking situation at the beaches. You know, I went through and I read most of the, the- I read most of the surveys that came back from the town. And I, I think parking is an issue. I think we need to look at the time the parking lots are open. I think we need to look at when we can open it to the public and to non-residents. I think we need to take a look at all that, and that's something that I would do as a town council member.
Okay, Alex, you're next.
I used to work for the Narragansett Town Beach, seven summers. It was the best summer job. And I used to hear all sorts of interesting comments and stories about visitors who came to the beach, both resident and non-resident. And I have sympathy for, and empathy for the increasing prices of all of these services. And we need to figure out ways in which we can afford building up the dunes. As a, as a human being, I'm not, I am not a fan of increasing resident beach parking or admittance fees or non-resident fees. I feel that every year, we've seen them go up every single year. And again, it comes down to the accessibility for people to come and use our beach. It's the best resource that we have in this town. And I also believe that we need to do better at making it more accessible for out-of-towners to be able to come in and use the town beach. It's one way in which we can market our town. It's one way in which we can get visitors to come in to support our local businesses in the pier. So that's my long-winded answer. But again, if there's any ways in which we can work together and collaborate on ways to find, find that money to support the, to support that fund, I hope we can do so.
Jill?
Okay, so it's a long question, but you started out with the beach study, which would be the Taylor Engineering Study. And I would like to use that as a management plan for the beach going forward. You mentioned climate change, and obviously there's some, some dune, dune restoration that we need to do, among other things. But the money needs to come from someplace. This last year, when we had the beach workshop, which is coming up in just a few weeks, one thing that I wanted to do, because no one was in favor of charging residents more for getting onto the beach, was to go ahead and ask for more money for our non-resident taxpayers' parking fee. If we were to increase that group by $50, that would offset a lot. It would not require that we have to actually change our residents' parking fees or walk-on fees. But it should be noted that it's been since 2012 that Narragansett has not raised our fees for walk-on. During that time, we've gone through many changes economically in this country. And we've also increased our costs for all goods at the, at the beach, as well as employees. So we need to charge to get on the beach. One, okay, one, one thing about parking, I believe that we're the only community that has a parking lot that is for non-residents. The west lot across from the beach has 178 parking spaces, and non-residents can use it. In addition, this council passed this year that during the week, at the discretion of the beach management, they could open up the south lot at 1:00. And that's been happening, and that's, we've had a lot of compliments from beachgoers about that. So we've done some good things to allow for more people to have at the beach, but it is very available for non-residents to park and to attend.
Rupert?
So as has already been said, the beach is really the heart of our town. It's the heart of our quality of life, and it's the foundation for our summer community and our tourism economy. And if you've been there lately, you know it's hurting, especially in the south end of the beach. It's very rocky, very little beach there. So we really do need to restore some dune there and some beach there. The Narrow River dredging study, one of the recommendations, options there was to use some of that sand to recreate the dune at the south end of the beach and expand the beach there. And I think that's, that's really, it's important to join these two pieces. They shouldn't be looked at in silos. I think they, they really go together. I said, but the other, the other piece of it is, I think the initial plan for restoring the beach and creating dune will need to be accompanied by an annual plan for replenishing sand. And a transport study needs to be done to see where the sand's going from the beach. And I agree with the idea of increasing the fee for the non-residential parking to help pay for this. But I think, I think some of the dredging, funding for the dredging also could create, the funding needed to create some of these dunes, so.
All right, thank you, Rupert. Steve, you're next.
Thank you. I, like is stated before, I do believe that the beach is one of our, you know, most majestic assets that we have. And, you know, we should take care of it. And I think the beach study will help us. We can use it almost like our Bible for the next 10 to 15 years. We can plan out part of the replenishment on that, depending on how the season goes. We can also use it to, maybe there's some, some more major improvements that we could do with the beach, and we can use it that way too. So I think it's really a matter of getting it all budgeted based on the recommendations of some of the, that was in the beach plan, and implementing some of that. Now, obviously, we all know that's going to cost some money. So, and that, it's an enterprise fund, which means it's paid by all the ratepayers. It's not a dime of the town's tax money that goes into that. So people have to understand, you know, if prices go up a little bit. Now, if we planned it out a little more than not having the fee for, stays stagnant, like Joe said at one time, I think that might be the key. So I'm for, you know, if we have to increase some fees, I think we, you know, we're going to have to if we want to keep that asset in the point. Or we have to explain that we're not following the beach capacity study. Thank you.
All right, Jason?
So I agree with Rupert that the beach and the river go hand-in-hand with each other. So I think dredging is of the most importance. I'm disappointed that the fisheries didn't want to go with option five. Option five is a better option, but option four is a good option. And if we go into phase two of the dredging project, there is a maintenance plan that goes along with it. So we have a plan. I don't think it's necessary to raise these fees. I think we can keep the fees as is. I think we could consider opening the parking lots up by the schools again and shuttling people down and get more people on the beach. Because that report says we've got plenty of capacity for people to come on the beach. So I think we have other ways to do it than upping our fees. I think we can come to a nice compromise and get everybody together and do a good thing for this whole town. Thank you.
Eva?
Thanks. You know, I've traveled all over the world, and Narragansett Town Beach is my favorite place in the world. What a lot of people don't understand, and when I run into people, they think taxpayer dollars go into funding the beach, and that there's no taxpayer funding that goes to maintaining the beach. The beach is a business, so you can't operate in the red. So obviously, you know, your operating costs can't be greater than the money you take in, your income on, on that business. So we haven't raised fees, the last, the councils that I've been on, and as Council Lawler stated, since 2012. It's great if you can't, if you don't have to raise fees. Like, who wants to raise any, any fees or, or charge any more money than they have to? But we do have the study, we do have a work session coming up, and we will have another data point. Because as I said before, I like my data, I like my reports. I like to make decisions based on, on information, and like real information. And we'll have that, the finances, and we'll be able to determine whether or not anything needs to change. But again, as everyone stated, it is our precious resource, and we need to maintain it to the beautiful place that it is. Thank you.
Jim?
Hi. For the question about beach fees to residents, I've always had a trouble with the residents paying a fee at all to use the beach. But that's already there. So increasing it would be totally against something I would think would be appropriate. And if we have to appropriate, increase it anywhere, would have to be trying to find more funds from the beach itself, which would be the parking, which other members have said. I think we've studied the beach. We don't need any more studies. I think, you know, that sand that's on our beach is down in Narrow River. We just got to get the sand out of there and bring it back on the beach. And I think it can be done very simply. But we need political help. And the way this town sits politically with state and federal officials now, I just feel terrible. Like, I don't think we can get anything, you know? Like, we've, you know, with all our lawsuits and all of that stuff, we've lost our, we've lost our ability to work with the State House. So I think a new town council will be, bring some fresh ideas and really help the stalemate that's going on with the beach rentals and sales and all the different things that all these lawsuits are dealing with.
Winn?
Thank you. First of all-
First of all, a little history with me and, oh, okay, start the timer over again, please. Thank you. Little history, when I was 14 years old, I was a Cabana boy. I had contracts with the town for 20 years where I cleaned the beach and drove a tractor up and down between 5:00 and 8:00 o'clock every morning. Also had a, a contract with the town to run the concession stand for a post of 20 years. So I spent a lot of time at the beach. As far as the beach enterprise fund now, it's got over $5 million in it, which is a lot of money. I, they make between $750,000 and $500,000 and $1 million a year to put in. I don't think there's any reason to raise any type of fees right now. You can open that parking lot up at 1 o'clock, let people park, and collect money there and increase your, your, your funds from that. As far as dredging, it's been a, a, a subject maybe for 30 years, as long as I can remember. But it's always been shot down because of the sand coming out of the Narrow River. It might be cleaner now, but dredging, it, it is polluted. It is polluted. It's very difficult to, to bring that sand and put it on the beach without sanitizing it. I talked to Jack Reed about probably doing that funding, but he's more concerned right now with the funding for Galilee and trying to get the breakwaters fixed there. So this is on his, his, he's, it's on his radar, but it's not on the top of his radar right now. To dredge that, you're looking at at least an 18-month, maybe two, three-year project in order to get it done.
Thank you, Win. Ryan, you get to wrap it up on this one.
Thank you. What, what can I say that hasn't been said? Narragansett Town Beach is our jewel. I love going to town beach, swimming out and chilling in the sand. But I am in favor of raising non-resident parking and admittance fees to try and replenish the beach enterprise fund to pay for dredging and other beach restoration projects. I believe Jason mentioned it earlier, but I would also like to look at opening up the middle or high school parking lots for out-of-town parking. We used to have a trolley service that ran through town. Let's bring it back, have it run to Nanas, to Warm Winds, to Surfside Deli, local businesses. Bring in tourism dollars to our local businesses. You know, finally ending at the beach, bringing additional tourists to our beach to enjoy our treasure. I yield.
Okay, thank you all for your answers to those questions. Guy Lancelotti will be asking the fourth question, which will begin with Alex. And again, you know, don't turn your page over until Guy asks the question. Guy?
So that last question is a great segue to my question, or the next question. The Narragansett Town-owned beach is the only Rhode Island coastal town that provides dedicated beach access and parking for non-residents. Yet despite dedicating the west lot to non-resident parking, the town continues to be criticized by coastal advocacy groups who want more beach parking made available for non-residents. Do you think our current beach parking rules should remain the same? Or would you change them? And if you would, how would you suggest changing them?
Okay, you can turn the questions over, and Alex, you begin.
Well, I have to say, definite benefit from having worked at the beach for seven summers, and it was the best job. I thought the policy then was great, and it worked well then. And that was, you know, south lot on weekdays would be open to non-residents charging. And once it was two-thirds full, it would switch over to residents only, and then west lot would open to, for pay. I thought it was a very good policy then. I would be in favor of it now. I think there is ample parking and opportunity for non-residents to come now. But I believe that I, I, I'm in favor of keeping the north lot residents only, south lot. I think there's an opportunity to make a little bit more money there if we were to go back to this strong policy that had been going on for quite some time. I mean, I'm, seven years I was working at the beach, and that policy never changed. So I personally would be in favor of the south lot being open until it gets two-thirds full, and then open up west lot on weekdays and weekends. You know, I'm, I'm in favor. That's fine if we want to keep weekends west lot only to non-residents until 1 o'clock. That's fine with me as well. So I think there's a compromise there.
Jill?
So the west lot does hold 178 parking spaces and is available to anyone, to non-residents. That is more than any other beach community offers. So those who are looking for more, more coastal access, you got it here in Narragansett. As far as our parking lot in the south lot, we now have the ability to have that lot open up again at the management discretion of the beach manager at 1 o'clock during the weekdays. We can't go away from the fact that it's a town beach. There are plenty of other beaches in this, in this, in this town, but this is dedicated to the town. So the town residents really need to be able to have access to this first. As far as the trolley, the trolley went away, not because of anything more than the insurance cost for the trolley was so much that the people that owned the trolley and operated it just couldn't afford to do so. So that is why the trolley went away. It had nothing to do with the town. It had everything to do with the trolley owner saying that the insurance cost was too great.
Rupert?
Yes, so my perspective on the, the beach parking lot is, is pretty similar to Alex's. I, I think it's important to keep the north lot for residents only, or residents or folks with have a season parking pass so that they can get in. I think that during the week, there's probably capacity in the south lot for additional non-residents, the people that are paying a day pass in addition to, to the west lot. But I, I think sort of monitoring the, the use and watching the numbers is important. And I also think exploring the options for restoring the trolley service, I think is a really good idea. I think it's needed not only for the beach, but I think it's also needed for, for the folks visiting the restaurants in town, so.
Steve?
Thank you. I believe there's, there's, there's a pretty good compromise on what's happening right now there at the beach with the west lot being open, available to everyone. You know, north lot, obviously the residents, and then the other one, the south lot, opening up maybe after 1 o'clock, if, if it's, it seems possible. So we kind of have something a little bit working somewhat okay there. And, you know, people forget about all the parking that's on Ocean Road, and that doesn't even mix into it. So, I mean, they can stay on that Ocean Road. There's probably over 300 spots on that also. It's not that great of an idea that people have to be parking there and staying there all day, but, you know, we could be getting more revenue, but that's another story with the parking issue. But I think it's, it's, it's a little bit of a compromise the way it is. Seems to be working okay. Maybe some tweaks at some point if some of the lots are, you know, empty at a certain time and people really feel like they need to be using. So that's how I feel. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
So I agree a lot with Rupert and Alex. But I also think that Steve makes a good idea, like, like if you can give the manager of the beach more of a power to open some lots when he knows that it's running low, especially Monday through Thursday, because we all know Monday through Thursday, it's, it's pretty empty there. But I'm gonna say this again, we have two parking lots up the road. We have our own buses. We can, we can get a trolley system going our own way. And I know you're gonna be in the yellow bus, but that's okay. It's okay. That's all I got to say.
Evan?
Thanks. So again, we are having the work session this coming meeting, at our next meeting on the 21st. So I'm very interested to see what data we get for that. I know they've, they've been keeping track of the parking spots and how full the lots are, and, and, you know, just based on the days, so, and it includes weather. So it'll be really good to review that and see really what the opportunities are. I know it would be great to have a shuttle service or, you know, the trolley back, but it was the, we want to protect our town as council members. We need to do our due diligence to protect the town from liability. And there was a big liability with that, which is why that didn't run. But of, of course, if somebody has some great ideas, I would love to hear those as well. But again, we will have information, and there, I'm, I'm just looking forward to that work session because they'll provide us with a lot of information that we need to hear. Thank you.
Jim?
This is a tough question for me, because I don't actually spend much time at the beach. The time I spend at the beach is usually like 6:30 in the morning until like 9:00. And it's really empty when I leave, when I go paddleboard and down at the river, you know? So I have to work every day in the summer, so I don't really spend those days at the beach. But when I do go by and I see empty parking lots, it really bothers me. And it seems like it's more than, you know, it, it happens a lot, especially with that south lot. And when I was a kid, people parked across the street in the grass lot. So I, I'm definitely for the shuttling of the people. And I really think that if we're gonna run the beach as a business, like an enterprise fund, we should let the beach manager be in charge of the enterprise fund. And then if they do something wrong, then we step in. But for us to have to set beach fees and make it political every year just seems like, I don't know, some kind of like, something that is too political. So it changes all the time, you know? I think it should be run as a business and for the residents first, you know? And I would work tirelessly for the shuttle service.
All right, thank you. Win, you're next.
I, I know they say there's 178 spots across the street. Start it over. I know they say there's 178 spots across the street, but there's 30 or 40 or 25 of them taken up by employees that go over there and park. My first thing would be employees cannot park there. They park at the school. They can be shuttled down and create another 35 or 40 spots that they do take up. Or they can make a deal, there's, it used to be a big parking lot in the middle of town. I know, none of you know that. I'm the only one that's old enough to remember. But you can also make a deal with the library for people to park in that area during the day and get out of there before people get busy. But the first thing I do is get the employees out of that lot. I have no problem opening the lot at 1 o'clock. We make money doing that. I live maybe 300 yards, 400 yards from the beach. I go by there every single day. And it's very disappointing. I think like Jim said, like 90% of the time I go by there and there's empty lots either, the south lot, north lot, there's plenty of parking. So we should utilize that for people who want to come to our beach. As far as the coastal advocacy groups, that's not the only thing they want is beach parking. But there's right-aways, and there's other things that are, they concern themselves with. But the first thing I do is get the employees out, create a few more spots there, then open up the south beach.
Ryan?
Finished in time for lunch.
Similar to Alex and Rupert and Jason, I believe that the north lot should be for residents. South should be for residents until 1 o'clock, offering the beach manager the discretion to open up additional parking lots for parking. Mentioned this in my prior answer, but I would like to open the middle and high school for additional out-of-town, out-of-towners parking. Looking at all solutions to try and bring a trolley or shuttle service to bring people to and from the beach. Thank you.
Donna?
Well, it's really hard coming up last, because everyone said everything. So basically, I agree with everything, so I'm not gonna even repeat it all. I, I do support the trolley or figuring out some way to utilize the schools so that we can use that parking in the summer. I think we need to take every idea and start thinking outside of the box and see if there's something else we can come up with. I, I mean, I, I was throwing out some ideas, and I was thinking of those electric bikes and with a little basket on the back, so someone can come and, if they want to, you know, put their beach towel and whatever, and take the bike down to the beach, and then have another place to put it down there, whatever. And it, it may not work at all. It may not even be something that can be considered. But I think if we throw out ideas, you never know. There might be an idea that someone has and that no one thought of, but I do support the trolley. I do believe that we need to have some way of transporting people down to the beach and that, and being able to park in the schools. So those are just my ideas.
Okay, thank you. That wraps up that question. Thank you for your answers to question, you know, four. So we're coming to our last question, question five. Brian Gilchrist from Eastwood Look will be asking this question. And again, when he asks it, you can turn the page. Yes, yes. Yeah, so Jill, all start this last question.
So I think we've all had a little, enough sand, salt, and sun for, for a few minutes. So let's move away from that for a moment. Do you believe that landlords who rent their properties in Narragansett are running businesses and should be taxed at a higher rate than owners who do not rent? If yes, would you be in favor of a new HE tax structure that provides the highest percentage of discounts to the lowest-valued properties to facilitate more affordable housing?
Okay. So first of all, I absolutely do believe that landlords are running businesses in our residential neighborhoods. We have hotels in every neighborhood in town, with the exception of maybe Indian Trail, who are lucky it hasn't made it up there yet. I am totally in favor of developing a two-tiered tax system. We would have taxes for the investor properties at a higher rate, and then have a lower rate that would be for owner-occupied, as well as any landlord who is good enough, and I want to stress, good enough, to have a year-round housing for the people, our workforce, and our families in town. At the lower tax rate for, for the year-round, another thing we could do is not have a, any type of a registration fee put on to the landlord that would be doing a, a year-round. Let me see, there was one more part of that, about the lower-valued properties number. The clearly white shirt, you're meaning about that, so a discount for the lowest-value properties. Anything that's gonna allow us to bring in some affordable housing and bring in the workforce into our town would be a good thing. Probably not best, best to answer in this question, but right now we have 33 kids in our kindergarten class. 33. We don't have families in this town, so we need to find ways to be able to bring in families. And some of these proposals that we're talking about for tax structure will do just that, especially if we can incentivize landlords to rent out year-round to families. We need to bring back families to this town. We are losing our community.
Rupert?
So my perspective is that the landlords that are renting their houses seasonally or Airbnb are definitely running businesses. So they end up opening a business in a residential community, and there's, there's no permitting process for that. So I think, I think taxing them as businesses is a good place to start, and I think, and I think it's fair. I think, I think we also should adopt a property tax incentive for landlords that rent year-round. So I think, thinking about that in, in this kind of consideration would be a good idea. The, the other part of this question that I think isn't really addressed is the town's property assessment records are really inaccurate and not updated. So the standards, assessment standards should be revised, that the number of bedrooms are considered in the assessment value. Right now, it's just assessed on square footage and not the number of bedrooms. And if you're renting a five-bedroom house versus a three-bedroom house, the value is much different, and I think that needs to be reflected in the bedroom count in the assessment records.
All right, Steve?
Thank you. Well, Narragansett, as everyone knows, is an unbelievably unique town. A lot of different things going on. But in this, this rental situation here, the, the plain fact is, is we really don't have a lot of hotels. We don't have a lot of room to put hotels in. So what's happened over the years, especially on, when this rental became a little more intense with the Airbnb and the, the, all the networks that you can, can boast on, our hotels are embedded in our neighborhoods. That's what's happened, because that's where all the bedroom space is. So, you know, I do believe that it's, it's more, more business-related in the, in the, than just the rental. I, I would like to say that, yes, I would be in favor of making it a higher tax. Something like the board had... of making it a higher tax, something like the board had worked on, the finance department had worked on that, the finance committee had worked on something like that, and they had made an attempt to it. So I would be in favor of that. And also in favor of, for a long time, long term rental to tap some incentive. And don't forget, there's one other person that is left out of the whole equation, that's the second homeowner. Now the second homeowner doesn't rent. They don't have any kids in the school. So I think possibly some consideration to that could could bring in, but certainly the, the long term rental for an incentive and, you know, disincentive for the investors. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
First, I'd like to say that I am a family man and I hang around with the families in Narragansett. And we are a strong community. We may be a small community, but we are a strong community and we love this town. So I just want you all to know that. These families in this town love this town and stand by it all day long. Okay. Next, I think that this conversation is something that could happen with the stakeholders, right? This is one of those negotiating points. Is it something that that we can come to a nice compromise on where something like a commercial rate makes sense for some owners, where it doesn't make sense for some other owners? So I, I agree that this is a good concept, but I think it needs to get vetted. And I think we need to have the conversation with everybody at the table. So.
Ever?
Thank you. So this council, current council tackled a lot this year. One of the things that we did was we referred to, to the finance committee is to study our tax structure. And they did a phenomenal job. It was too late in the budget season to really address or make any changes, but there were, they addressed either a two tier tax structure or increasing the homestead exemption. What they did find is that we would be able to increase the homestead exemption to twenty percent. And that would still be feasible and viable. I do want to do anything that we can to help with housing affordability. The other thing I will say is, when we were doing the short term rental ordinance, we refer to it as businesses because it is businesses. So short term rental businesses could be taxed at the higher rate, which is, we, we still have a low tax structure because our residential rate is six dollars and fifty five cents and our home, a commercial is eight eighty four. But we all know that those are businesses and that is taking away from housing affordability.
Jim?
I think it's, I'm not for it or against it. It's just something that has to be vetted, like other people have said. It's been talked about many times. It came up when I was on the council in two thousand to two thousand eight. I don't know what would, what houses would be classified as businesses. I guess if you increase the homestead exemption, then the people that were not able to get the homestead exemption would be paying a higher tax, obviously, right? So would that be everybody that rents? Or would that just be the people that are, I mean, some people just don't rent their house. There's more and that, more of that all the time. Most of the sales that I've been making are people that just want a spot in Narragansett. They lock their doors October first and they leave, you know. Point Judith's a ghost town in the winter. If we didn't have students, I don't know what we'd do. I know it's not like that all over town. But I'm, I'll be willing to listen to whatever everybody has to say. And I think we have to see what the state comes up with, with the short term rentals and the new Landlord Tenen Act before we do anything, really.
All right. Win?
I'm ready for you. This, is this on? Oh, I'm ready for you. Sorry. First of all, unless I've changed state law, it's against the law to create, to designate rentals as businesses. Because it's the poorest people who rent houses. You can't discriminate between the poorest people and the, and what happens here. They might have changed that law, but for right now, it's, as far as I know, it's still a law. But I would propose what I started saying before, in order to address this, I would increase the homestead exemption, double it from ten percent to twenty percent. Also extend that to anybody who rents their house year round. I would also make an allowance for first time house buyers, home buyers within the town of hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, again, to phase out over five years to try to encourage people, young families to come in. If Kamala wins, there's a twenty five thousand dollar first time home buyer allowance coming in as well. But it's, it's not an easy thing. You can't, you, you just can't throw the people who rent out of their houses, especially if you have a fireman, policeman, or other workers that we, I just met with the fire department, as a matter of fact, and there's not one fireman that lives in this town. Used to be a requirement, they used to have to live in this town, but they can't afford it anymore. By doing this, hopefully, they might be able to afford to rent and then eventually buy.
All right, Ryan?
In conversations with residents, single homeowners and landlords alike, I heard, don't touch my taxes. But affordable housing, housing that is affordable within Narragansett always came up. I do support Rupert's idea for tax consideration for year round rentals as well as increasing the homestead exemption. But bluntly, we need affordable housing in town. Let's look at decommissioning Fort Greene in the South End. It's utterly unused and could be used as a blueprint for affordable housing across the United States. How many World War Two era military bases are there that are sitting unused? We could look at buying back dilapidated land in Point Judith from Providence for the development of affordable housing for teachers, fishermen, firefighters, and families. Thank you.
Donna?
So I guess I would have to agree with what Ryan just said. I would support increasing the homestead twenty percent. I would also continue to keep on all the exemptions that we currently have. I would support a year round incentive if, if people are renting their homes year round. I think that would be, there should be some type of incentive for that. And I also believe that affordable housing is a major issue, which needs to be looked at. And that's why we need to pass the three million dollar bond that's going to be on the ballot. It's the beginning, it's the start of having the funds available. If something comes up, we could at least start to purchase or look at it, look at properties to try to get some affordable housing for the firemen, teachers, and whoever else needs to, at this point, come and live and be part of Narragansett families and boost up our kindergarten classes. I have a lot of ideas on how to do that, but that's not the question.
Alex?
No, I think there's, this is one of those questions where you're happy you can go last, because I think there were a lot of great ideas that were shared at this table. You know, knocking on doors, people are happy with the current tax structure. This is one of those issues where you really need to invite stakeholders into the conversation. It is so important now more than ever. You know, Jill pointed out that we only have thirty three kids in our kindergarten class, and that is a very real problem. The decline in, the decline in student enrollment is a serious problem. It's not something unique to our town, but it's something that we can collaborate as a community and with our neighboring towns with the state. We have to be able to do better. And any policies that will help make properties more affordable and bring in families into our town. We have the best town. That's why we want to serve this town. And in order for there to be a town, we need families to come in. And I will support any policy that allows that to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, that completes round one. And thank you all for those, you know, answers. We are doing pretty well time wise, and I want to thank all of you for your adherence to the timeframes here. I know they're short timeframes and they're complicated questions. So thank you. We're now going to begin round two. And, and basically, we're going to go back to Ron Catanzaro to start round two. And the first person to answer on round two will be Rupert Friday. Ron?
Thank you. Thank you.
You can turn the sheets over now for round two.
Sixty seconds. Sixty seconds.
Sixty seconds on this one.
Okay, sixty seconds. First question, Rupert. Do you own and or co-own rental and or have a business that owns rental property in Narragansett? And if so, will you recuse yourself from discussions and votes related to rental ordinances?
I don't own any properties in Narragansett other than my house, and I live in that. I don't rent it and don't plan on renting it in the near future.
Steve?
No, no rentals and just, just my home. Thank you.
My wife, Emily, owns a house in Pettumus, Wisconsin. I would, I don't think it's something that I would have to recuse myself from.
Ever?
I own, own our, our house and no rental properties.
Jim?
I don't own any rental properties. Only kidding. So I knew this question was going to come. So I own a lot of rental property. I take care of my property. I don't have problems with my property. I pay a lot of taxes on my property. I think everybody knows by the laughter that I own rental property. And if they don't want to vote for me, then they don't need to vote for me. If I can, if I can legally vote on something, I'm going to vote. And they're voting for me to vote. They don't expect me to recuse myself. I think that's way, you know, I've been abused a lot. But I'll get my answer from the, you know, the Ethics Commission, because I'll have to ask that question. And it'll come down to the amount of property I guess I own in relationship to the rest of the property that's rented. I think that's how they figure it out, you know.
All right. Thank you. Win?
Oh, I own one rental property next door to my, I own one rental property that's next door to my house. It's a subsidized rental. Family's been there for about ten years. If I ever rented it for the fair market price, they would have to leave town. I don't intend to do that. They've been very good tenants. And I think if more people look to find year round tenants, they would be surprised about the quality of people you could find. I would not recuse myself from anything concerning rental ordinances. I have definite opinions about how these things should be, should be enforced and how they should be presented to the public. If anybody has any questions, I'll give you my phone number.
Ryan?
Yes. My family has rental property. I would not recuse myself from this because of who my family is, just by virtue of being related. In fact, we just had a year round rental tenant that just re-upped on their year round lease.
Donna?
I do not own rental property. I live in the house, my house that I own. I did at one point have a, when I hired you, my, my ex husband and I bought a condo where we, my daughter lived. And my daughter lived there for seven years and we sold that. And we have now, are, I'm currently now living with my daughter and my two grandchildren. So no, I've never rented property or owned property to rent.
Okay, Alex?
I do not own any rentals or businesses in this town. I'm born and raised in this town and haven't left, lived here for now thirty one years. And I strongly believe that if there are any ideas or any conflicts of interest whatsoever, you should absolutely recuse yourself. Thank you.
Okay, Jill?
I do not own any rental properties, nor do my family. I am a Realtor. I do not work with investors and I also do not handle any type of rentals. And I agree with what Alex just said. If there's any, any even thought that somebody might be able to have a conflict of interest, they should recuse themselves.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to move on now to lightning round, or semi-lightning round question, you know, two by Dina DeRusso from Point Judith. And she will start with Steve Ferrandi, and you can turn your pages now to that question.
This fall, twenty two students were arrested during the first week of school. Two students were arrested on multiple charges resulting from the Bonnet Shores riot. And seven orange stickers have thus far been issued. Will you support and enforce the zoning ordinance that limits the number of students allowed per rental property?
Thank you, Dina. Yes, I, I would support it. And I'm very much in favor, and I did vote for the three college student ordinance. I think it's different than a lot of the unrelated ordinances, and I think it's very enforceable. It's something we need desperately. We can't keep our houses becoming mini dormitories in the neighborhood, and that's one right after the other. There's been a lot of vetting on this ordinance, too. Providence had vetted, vetted this out, I think it started in two thousand fifteen. It had, had drawn a challenge and then it ended up going to the Supreme Court. And this is a, this is a Supreme Court upheld vetted ordinance that the town, you know, should, should be using as part of its enforcement. Thank you.
Jason?
I will support the state law that was just passed, which is one per bedroom up to five bedrooms.
Ever?
I, actually, my record stands for itself again. So I did support the, the three student ordinance. It, you know, all, all places all over the nation that have universities in their towns have limits to the amount of students that live in a house. And when I did my research while I was studying this ordinance, when we were looking into it, three was the common number. So it's not unheard of. Just in, in reference to the state law that was passed, from what I understand, the ruling by Judge Lambfair may, that may not be in play because it also has unrelated in it. And it, when we had our ordinance, it referenced unrelated and it was vague and ambiguous. So that was kind of, kind of struck down. So anyway, so that's just a point that I'd like to make.
Jim?
I think it's pretty clear that the, the law is five. And that's what we, would it, you know, go by, five.
Win? Microphone?
It's, how did we get here? How do we get to five? Sorry. How do we get to five? We used to have four. With the affordable housing, the state legislature, the speaker, they tried to do things to try to increase affordable housing as much as possible. Somebody wanted to do and push the three students. What happened, and, and I argued against this at the time, it's, it's simple economics. If you got twenty four hundred students want to come into this town, at four, you need six hundred houses. At three, you need eight hundred houses. After they passed this, the sale of three bedroom houses went through the roof. All the prices in town went up after they passed the three ordinance. And it, it upset the speaker, it upset a lot of people. So what do we end up with? Instead of just leaving it alone at four, boom, now we have now one bedroom and we're up to five. It is, it was a simple thing not to get involved in, just to enforce the rules that we had at the time.
All right. Thank you. Win? Ryan?
I also will abide by the state's regulation of five, one per bedroom up to five. But we do need to be tough on URI to build additional dormitories or residence halls on campus. Narragansett bears the brunt of a continually increasing student population at URI. So as much as we can put back on to the university to build residence halls to house their students, the better off this town will be.
Donna?
I would abide by the state ruling of one bedroom per student up to five.
Alex?
Just start off by saying what happened in Bonnet Shores was absolutely disappointing. And it was quite honestly, a tragedy for this community. There is absolutely zero tolerance for any of that behavior to exist in this town. And I am relieved that no one was seriously hurt, and I commend the officers on their quick response. We need to do better reaching out to URI or neighboring communities, you know, Ryan's already pointed out. We, they need to build more dorms. I mean, we are not responsible for housing every student that goes into URI. And sometimes it can feel that way. But we also have to create policy that we are able to enforce. We need to crack down on any behavior that is unruly. And I believe in the state law that was just passed, one per bedroom up to five. And again, I understand the three student ordinance, or at least the, where its basis comes from. But I think with greater collaboration with our neighboring communities, we can come up with a compromise.
Jill?
First, I wanted to start out with thanking the officer that's in the back of our room. Our officers went out to a very large gathering and were attacked. These URI students jumped two of our officers. One of the officers actually thought that one of the kids was going for his gun. That's scary and unacceptable behavior. And to my knowledge, URI still has not expelled that student. There are about six thousand, seven thousand URI students here in town, and we need to have a better balance. That is why
That is why the three-student ordinance is gonna be enforced in this town. It has, has been upheld by the Supreme Court. And to the point that some of the individuals on the board here are making today about the state law, I believe that the state law has just been knocked down. Judge Lambier just, just ruled that our form-related, the town's form-related, was unconstitutional because unrelated is a too vague, um, definition. There's too vague, too, the term is too vague. So by him saying that judge, that our four unrelated is unconstitutional, I believe that that means the state law is unconstitutional as well. So that's done.
Ruben?
So conceptually, I support the three-student ordinance. Um, I think it's important for housing affordability in the town, uh, because it sort of reduces the outside investors' incentive to, to come here and speculate on real estate to rent. As has been discussed, the, uh, state passed the ordinance, the, the law, limiting one, one per bedroom up to five. Uh, when the planning board was reviewing this, our legal counsel felt like this also applied to three students. But since then, the judges, uh, sort of found that definition in the state law not valid. So it's, it's unclear to me where we are with this. But I'd be interested in hearing from a good legal counsel that, that understands land use planning, their perspective on this. I'm not an attorney and I don't want to try and interpret it.
Steve? You're the wrap-up on this.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, well, I mean, it's, it's awful what happened up there. And, uh, it just said in, that, yeah, you started with me. Yeah, yeah, you started. I, I believe I started the question, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It was done.
Uh, in moving to, uh, sorry about that, Steve. In moving to, uh, question three, we're gonna jump to Ron Gilchrist from Eastwood Park, uh, and he's gonna start with Jason.
Okay, according to the last census, Naragansett is the only Rhode Island town to have lost the population, in our case, 8%. Also, according to the 2024 Crane Report, only 44% of our residential properties are now owned by residents. How can Naragansett address the dramatic decline in residents and resulting school population?
Okay, Jason?
So a few things here I think are important. Um, yeah, I'm drawing the blank on it. Let me start with something I think about. Um, for the school population, I'm a big fan of CTE programs. Those are, uh, training programs, uh, and educational programs. We have one of the better ones in Rhode Island here, but we could bring more in. And we can bring students across, uh, from districts and bring them into our school system. We could build the school system that way. I also think that for bringing families in here, we could build our parks up better. We have really, really bad parks. It's a consensus among most of the families. Christopher O is a disgrace and we need to make that our prime goal, to make that our, our key playground. I, I took my children over to Jamestown for the first five years of their life because their playground is magnificent. Um, we need a playground like that. We need a Wilson Park. We need a Jamestown Park. Um, and the other thing is we have a $3 million bond coming on the table this year. We should vote it in. It's a good start.
Eva?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll say what we should, um, do to help with this, with this issue is, uh, keep on doing what this current council has been doing, um, fighting for, um, community. I think we need to, um, curb, um, and prevent, um, investor speculation, which has kind of caused this issue. Um, so we did, uh, that's what we've been trying to do. And that was important to have a short-term rental ordinance, um, have the limits on students or, um, individuals who can be in a house and the bulk zoning. And I'm gonna say this, our ordinances were working because, um, you know, it, it was deterring people from wanting to buy a second home for rental. And, um, you know, I've spoken with Realtors and, and it gave people pause when they, you know, they would be told about the ordinances that we had in place. And then they would decide not to buy the house. So I think things that we have been doing would work and we just need to be able to continue to do them um, and not be prevented from implementing ordinances that work best for our town to help with, um, year-round housing, housing affordability. Thank you.
Jim?
Um, if we continue to do those things, we're not gonna have anybody coming to our town. It's, uh, I'm sorry, Eva, I can't agree with that. But anyway, um, I, I really think the 8% decline is the, um, is the people that, that are growing old like we are and just going to Florida. They're not residents of our town anymore, they're residents of Florida. And it's a lot more than 8%, I'd say. Um, because we knock on doors all the time and they all flower plates and they can't vote for us. They want to vote for us, but they can't vote for us. So that's all figured into this Crane Report. I graduated, first graduating class of, um, Naragansett. We never had a high school when I was a kid. And they built, I went to Hendrick here for two years and we went to a brand-new school as juniors. And the seniors, they let stay whatever school they were at. So we were in a brand-new school for two years as the senior class. And we had 100 and, 100 kids. It was 115 last year.
Thank you, Jim. Winn? Microphone?
I'll go back to what I was talking about before. Sheesh. Gotta give me my own microphone next time, Harry, please. I'll go back to what I was talking about before, about, uh, a homestead exemptions. I mean, everybody in this room who owns a home, you know, to, to double your exemption and hopefully you talk with neighbors or and explain to people that if they moved to Naragansett, they're gonna get a homestead exemption worth 20%. Uh, if they move, they're brand-new, they're gonna get, uh, allowances, uh, or another exemption of being a first-time homebuyer. There's a lot of things we can do to encourage people to come in. But as far as 8%, uh, 8% might be a high number. But if you look at every community in this, in this town, I, I state to me, I don't think any of them had increased in population. Uh, everybody is bleeding. Uh, all the schools, Warwick, East Greenwich, South Kingston, they're all talking about closing schools. You know, it's, it's a problem. Uh, it's not just Naragansett, it's just not the rentalist situation in Naragansett that's causing this. We're bringing now more people from, uh, from Jamestown.
All right, thank you, Winn. Ryan?
Um, as, as Winn has said, this is not an issue that's endemic to Naragansett. This is statewide, this is countrywide. Millennials, uh, Gen X are having fewer children, um, due to higher cost of living and other factors. That said, what can we tangibly do? Um, I agree with Winn. Uh, he has a great idea for a homestead exemption. Um, try to, uh, invite, uh, people to live here full-time, um, by increasing their homestead exemption. We can continue, uh, to invest in our schools, to build strong arts, music, mechanical engineering, FFA programs, uh, and bring in out-of-town students. Uh, make this a desirable school to come to for Charlestown, for S.K., for other, uh, Jamestown, for students from out of our, uh, district. Initially, we can work to decommission Fort Grant, uh, buy back dilapidated Dan Point, land in Point Judith from Providence, uh, for, uh, real estate or, uh, housing development. Thank you.
Donna?
You know, walking around Naragansett knocking on doors, I've met the most amazing people. And I, I've met, um, retired professors and I've met engineers and I've met people who own big, huge companies and people who are well-educated. We are a well-educated community. And I think we need to come up with a plan and we need to come up with a plan from input from all these people, all these people who make these decisions, out-of-the-box decisions, every day when they go to work in their businesses. And I think we have to start looking out of, out of the box and looking for different ways that we can come up with some idea of how we can do this. I also agree with Ryan that we could be, I worked in a magnet school. It was an arts magnet school. We brought kids in from the suburbs and from other districts. It was a premier program. And, and we have a great, uh, talented and gifted program here. We could start an elementary school. We can invest more money in our program, build that program. I know in South Kingston, there's parents always looking for those types of programs.
Thank you, Donna. Alex?
I think it's already been addressed that this is certainly not a unique issue to Naragansett. And I believe that with greater collaboration amongst our community and our neighboring communities, we can work together to solve a lot of these issues. Um, you know, serving on the school committee has provided a unique lens. You know, there's a lot of families that want to come into our community, but due to the lack of affordable housing, affordable properties for families to be able to come in and, and to grow within our community is lacking. And again, that's not unique to Naragansett, but we need to do everything that we can because whatever we're doing is not working, but it sounds like there are resolutions that are on the table. Um, and again, I, I like this idea of a homestead exemption, 20% first-time homebuyer. I, I like, I like all of the options that include a homestead tax exemption. And again, we've got some of the best schools in the state just recently recognized. Again, my hat's off to them.
Thanks. Jill?
Okay, so, so a way that we can actually address this is through our short-term rental ordinance and our three-student ordinances with creating a two-tiered tax system that is gonna tax the investors at a higher rate. Our finance director has told us that over the next foreseeable future, we're gonna be increasing our taxes by 4% every single year, 4%. That's gonna make people really take back about can they actually live here? So we need to create that tiered tax system so that we can tax investors at a higher rate so that we can lower the property values for the people that live here year-round. Another thing that we can do, um, as far as families, I'm on the REC Board, um, commission in town. And we are looking at lessening the amount of summer concerts and movies and putting additional funds that were taken from there and pushing them to the shoulder seasons so that families have something to do in the, in the wintertime, in the springtime, so that we offer more recreational activities to young families to help them want to be here.
Ruben?
So it's, it's unusual for coastal community that's near employment centers to lose population. Some might call it weird. Uh, in the past 20 years, undergraduate enrollment alone at the university has increased 29%, over 3,300 students. The town houses between 6,000 and 7,000 students. If the university revised its alcohol policy for drinking on campus and built housing for 2,000 additional students, I suggest we'd free up 500 houses. And that would really address our housing affordability problem overnight. And I think you or I can do this without spending a dime by working with, uh, real estate investment trusts that build housing for students on campuses around the country. So I think it's a solution. And once those houses are more affordable, we'll have more families here and it'll really impact the student enrollment.
All right, Steve, you do get to be last this time.
Okay, here we go. Uh, well, you can see the picture. I mean, that, from the last census, that was, you know, 2020, so we're already four years into the next decade here. And, uh, you know, we, we're going and this is still kind of going in the wrong direction. So I think it's all about the policies that the last council started. You know, it's, you, you, we're fighting a, a big, the elephant in the room is URI and the $50 million rental industry that's in this town. And it's a lot of money. And any, any kind of movement towards, uh, any adjustment to that, would be the three-student ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance. Everything's fine, they all say they want to agree, but all you see is a lawsuit on what we do. It's too much. Uh, it's not enough. So, you know, we have to continue the policies. It's, it's a battle, we're in a war here. But, you know, this is a war for the health of our town. And we don't have, excuse me, much community anymore. There's not as many students here in our school, 33 is ridiculous. But, you know, that's what we have. So we gotta start facing this and try to, uh, work with it, work with URI.
Uh, all right, that, that, thank you all for your, um, answers to the lightning round question three. We'll move on to lightning round question four. Uh, and this question will be asked by Diane Peretti from Brink's Farm. And we'll be starting the questioning with Eva, there's in ski. So Diane?
A recent town-funded study recommended dredging the mouth of the Narrow River and placing the dredged sand on the town beach to rebuild the dunes. Cost estimates range from $3 million to $7 million. Do you support the dredging of the river? And if so, would you support the taxpayers being, bearing, excuse me, bearing this expense?
Um, so this, um, agenda, uh, this was actually approved at this past council meeting. So the town council, um, approved, um, option, um, option four of, um, the proposal by both engineering. And that was just, it's like a temporary, um, what, temporary measure. Um, and it did actually at, direct the town manager to find funding. I think there's multiple stakeholders involved in this. Um, so we are going to, um, try to lessen the tax burden. We don't, we want to be able to find others to help us with this project. It does affect a lot of town, like other towns such as South Kingston. Um, and again, we consulted with Fish and Wildlife Service and I did want to see the dunes, um, the dune option. Um, but in order to compromise and, and make the project move forward and, and get the, and get the permitting, um, we opted for option five. So this is gonna be a long project, um, but I think it's important for the health of the river. And again, um, we're always trying to reduce the tax burden, so we will find funding options. Thank you.
All right, Jim?
Uh, yes, so, um, I think the most important part is to move forward on this as a town. We will find the funding. Um, I know the Dunes Club and there's a couple other stakeholders that are gonna chip in. Um, it's a, this is something that's been going on for way too long and we can't just blame, like, we don't have enough money to do it. Um, we have to get back on the political scene. We have to get money from the state, get money from our representatives, work together as a team. And I think we can get this done and get it done permanently with annual permits that just continually keep that mouth open. Um, the, uh, if somebody goes into the towers, they can see the old picture of the old town. And there was a north pier and a south pier. The south pier is still there, but the north pier has disappeared. And if you look, like, outside the towers parking lot there, you'll see all the rocks.
All right, thank you, Jim. Winn? Uh, microphone?
Thanks, Harry. Don't know what I'd do without you. Uh, you know, I, I touched a little bit of, uh, about this before. Uh, I'd be 100% in favor of getting this river dredged, but I've been 100% in favor of it for the last 30 years. Uh, $3 million to $7 million, that would be wonderful, the town can afford that. But it'd be nice to get the Dunes Club, North Kingston, South Kingston, all to chip in a little bit of money. I don't think that's a realistic figure. I think it's gonna cost a lot more than that to do that. You're gonna have to go through, uh, uh, Army Corps of Engineers. You're gonna have to have that sand tested. There's a lot of things. This, this is, this is not an overnight fix. This is 12, 18 months, maybe even up to two years, maybe longer than that to get this done. Like I said, uh, it's been bandied around for a long time. They tested the sand, it was polluted, uh, because of all the lawn chemicals and everything that go in the river, they all end up there. That's reduced because a lot of people don't use those.
All right, thanks, Winn. Ryan?
I support this dredging project and working with our state reps, uh, to acquire state funds, federal reps to acquire federal funds, and the Dunes Club, uh, to pitch in as well because they will benefit. Um, I support continual replenishment, uh, and investing in, uh, our beach to restore the jewel of our town. This is not the beach I went to when I was a child or lifeguarded. Um, we need a continual replenishment plan, um, such that, uh, it can be around for my children, hopefully. Thank you.
Donna?
Um, I, I applaud the town council for passing, um, that proposal this past week because I think it shows the, the seriousness of this project. We need to dredge this river. And I think when we are going forward to try to secure funds, it shows that we care about this river. We're putting, we're investing our money into it and therefore asking the state, federal government. And we have to have those relationships. We have to work really hard to establish relationships and work with our, our state and federal people. And, uh, so that we can go in situations like this and say, you know, we, we need the help, we need the money. And I would work really hard to, uh, establish those relationships, um, to, I, I continue with mutual respect and, and, and so that the town in Naragansett is looked upon as, as a place that's willing to help its residents, work with its residents, get this project done and work, come forward and hopefully they can help us with the money and the, and other.
Thank you, Donna. Alex?
I'm 100% in favor of dredging the river, but I also believe that the taxpayers of Naragansett should absolutely not have to bear the burden of the entire expense. This is a, an issue, and again, I applaud the initiative, the passing of dredging. Um, it's a sign of good faith. I'm hoping that we can get some federal and state aid as
I'm hoping that we can get some federal and state aid as a result of this good faith. You know, we can build up the seagrass, plant the seagrass, build up the dunes. We need long-term solutions for the health of the river, the safety of our community, the preservation of our beach for our generations to come. And I believe that dredging the river, the longer we wait to act on it, the more expensive it's going to be. So the best solutions, whatever that looks like, whatever we can afford as a town and with the partnership of our neighboring communities, we should be in favor of it. Thank you.
Jill?
So the town council did just vote on this this past Monday, and this will be going out for RFP, for request for proposal. And this will open up the mouth of the river and is a start. I ever mentioned before that we had actually liked option number five, which would add dunes to the project. However, when we spoke with Fish and Wildlife, who is a key player, they didn't like the dunes. They didn't like the idea of the dunes, the piping plovers around the end of the beach. They didn't want to disturb them. So because they said they might not like that, the town reconsidered and said, let's just go with option number four. We can start the permitting process and maybe in the future, we can try to add dunes in that area. Because we do collaborate with all sorts of people in this dredging project from DEM to the Narrow River Preservation Society, to Fish and Wildlife, to CRMC. And most importantly, Narragansett will not bear the burden of the cost for this project alone. The Dunes Club, we're already speaking with them, South Kingstown, North Kingstown. As a matter of fact, our town manager has given this project to our grant writer for one of their very first projects to look for grants. And the dollar amount that we approved on Monday is in like the low ones.
Thank you, Jill. Rupert?
So it seems to me there are three aspects to this project. One is improving navigation from the Narrow River to the ocean. The second is beach and dune restoration for recreation, environmental restoration, and storm resilience. And the third is the health of the river, the marshes, and the aquatic environment. I suggest from the town's perspective that beach health is as important as the navigation. The Narrow River Preservation Association has over 30 years of trend data for water quality in the river. Let's make sure that data informs this decision. I'm concerned that this will be a lost opportunity and that we're going to make a decision that is penny wise and pound foolish and a short Band-Aid for just one part of the navigation problem. We heard at the, at the workshops, people were saying, well, all the projects that were proposed, the dredging projects, did not go far enough upriver to, to solve the navigation problem. So let's do this right.
All right, thanks Rupert. Steve?
As, as was stated before, we, the council did pass this, and I think it's a good start to get the ball rolling. There's, and said before, you know, there's three different towns, four, five, six different agencies. So at least this gets something started. It could be a start of a bigger project, then that the river is not that easy to navigate anymore. So at least this will get things rolling. We can get the RFP out, as Jill stated, and, you know, get rolling on it. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
We have to dredge the, the river. If we don't dredge the river, the river's going to die, and that's unacceptable. I liked option five as well, but option four is fine. It's a piecemeal for the, for everybody to try and get some Fed and State aid. I want to rebuild those dunes. I want to put that sand back on the beach. And as you know, there's a maintenance, maintenance plan in phase two that's already built in. So we will continue to dredge or fix the rivers at that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to move on now to our last question of lightning round. And Guy Lancelotti from Canachet will ask the question, and the first person to answer will be Jim Durkin. So Guy?
Okay, so as you're aware, the O'Neill Bike Path ends in this parking lot here where we're sitting at the community center. Are you in favor of extending the bike path from the community center where we're at to the town beach? And if so, what route would you recommend this bike path take?
Jim? So my first years on the council in 2000, I forced my, my members on the town council to look at extending it from 108 over at, it's a Mexican place now, I think there. We couldn't go across the road there, so we, we got that approved to go down to, to Narragansett. There was a neighborhood there on Passani Platt. Two of the members that were on the council were friends of mine, and they just did not want that bike path going through there. So I looked at it and I said, well, why don't we just cut over through this electric easement onto Kingstown Road? And, you know, everybody thought that was a good idea, and that's how it ended up. So we ended up.
Really? Win? Microphone?
Bike path, yes, 100% in favor of it. I get emails from Dave and Rosemary all the time, which path to use, which route to use? I'm not sure. I know there's been several that have been bandied around, but whatever route that comes is the most feasible, I am in favor of extending it to the beach. I live 30 Wood Avenue, so my property backs up to the Canachet Farm. So I would like to see it completed. And if it goes through the west parking lot, so be it. If it goes through Canachet with all the fancy houses, so be it. I'm not, I don't want to rule out anything. I would, the best route that we can possibly do is what I would be in favor of.
Brian?
I'm a biker myself. I would like to complete the bike path. It's wonderful that the extension was added and it goes behind the elementary school and ends at the community center now, but this bike path should run from West Kingston to the beach. I eagerly await the results of the Dupree feasibility study and look forward to seeing what they return in regards to the best option possible. I'd like to avoid going through neighborhoods as best we can, but again, the bike path should be completed such that it ends at the beach.
Donna?
I, I'll too, I also believe that we need to finish the bike path. And I think that we should do everything we can to try to keep it out of the neighborhoods. We walked the path the other day, and I walked and just to see, because maps is not, reading maps is not really my thing, so I walked, I walked the area so that I would have an understanding of the bike path. And I think there, there's some options, and I think we need to sit down with all stakeholders, and we need to talk about the options, and we need to look at what's usable for the town and for the residents and what's going to work best for everybody.
Okay, Alex?
I think that, you know, there are at least three options, probably many more, that are being looked at. I commend the many years of passion and dedication to building a bike path within our community. I think it's really been a tremendous asset, and I would really like to see, if it's at all possible, to see it extend to the town beach. You know, we go around taking such great pride in our town beach, and it would be, I think, just wonderful to see that access continue all the way to the town beach. But I have to emphasize that residents absolutely have to be listened to first and foremost. I would not really like to see a bike path go through a residential neighborhoods. I think there are options on the table that really can take that into consideration. And, you know, I think with greater collaboration, we can come up with a resolution that works for all.
Jill?
So Dupree Engineering did present three paths to the county council, and we voted them all down 5-0. They all took away considerable amount of parking, and as we all know, parking is a problem in the pier. Dupree is currently looking at another option going behind in the woods, but I doubt they'll be able to find a way to do it that will be able, DEM will like it, or financially we could afford it. We've heard from the neighbors at Wanda and Othmar and also Canachet Loud and Clear, they do not want the bike path going down their neighborhood, and I agree. As far as what we should do right now, I believe that we should bring it out, back to like where the Indian is, the Indian statue. We could put a kiosk there, a comfort station, a bike rack, and it would bring people into the, into the neighborhood of, of the, of the community of the pier, and that could, they could then go down to the beach.
Rupert?
So, yeah, I think the bike path needs to be completed. It will provide another way for people to reach the beach, but also South County Museum. And in my opinion, based on my background doing transportation planning, I think the path needs to be off the main roads. And I know some of the proposals were to put it down a main road, but it needs to be off the main roads so that it's safe for families with small children and jogging strollers. Because of the untenable cost for the route through the wetlands, I believe the most feasible route for finishing the path is out, is that route outlined by Deb Kopeck through Canachet Farm and through the west parking lot.
Steve?
I, I too, I am not in favor of putting the bike path through a, through a local neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's, I would maybe consider it if the price were okay, or if it wasn't so prohibitive, we could bring it some, some way into Canachet Farm, but even that would be, have to put up decking in and all of us be like a bridge. So it's, it's difficult. It ends where it is now, right behind the community center there. I mean, there's a possibility of putting a big bike rack there or possibly bringing it a little closer towards Kingstown Road. I know it's a main road, but it's going to be very difficult to bring it into the back of that Canachet Farm with all the wetlands. And I, and I do appreciate all the work everybody did on it because I know we've been, you know, this has been going on a long time. But I do not, I do not believe about, you know, putting it through the neighborhood. Thank you.
Jason?
I'd like to see it finished. I'd like to see it go to the beach. I understand the resistance of going through a neighborhood. I have a friend that lived on MacArthur Boulevard, and it went through that neighborhood, and it was very safe, and it was, they haven't had incidences on it. I'm not saying we need to go through neighborhoods, but I'm saying that, well, I'd like to see some things on the table so that we can talk about it a little more. We'll see what Dupree comes up with this next wetlands thing. I'd love to see it go through the woods, but I want to see it go to the beach. Thanks.
Edward?
Yeah, so this has been a very, very long project, and I had to go through minutes from past councils, and it's really dated back to a very, for a very long time. And it's been an ongoing project and process. So we did have a work session, as Council Lawler mentioned, we did reject the, the recommendations, and we did direct Dupree Engineering to explore other, other options. So again, that's, that's in the phase right now that they're looking into it. So there'll be other options presented. It won't be with this council, it'll be with the next council. So that will be reviewed once all that information is back because we did ask them to review other alternatives. I would like to see the bike path completed. However, you know, at the next work session, there will be an opportunity for members of the community and neighborhoods to participate and kind of give their feedback and, you know, any of the key stakeholders present. But again, hoping this is finished.
All right, thank you. Well, that, that completes our lightning round, and it completes our questions for the evening. And I want to thank the candidates again for their timeliness, and actually, we're right on schedule here. So I think we want to give them each a chance to provide closing remarks, and I think given the timeframe, we can afford 60 seconds each for that, so a minute apiece. So Win, you get to start.
Run out of time. I'll talk to you later. Okay. My name is Win Hames, for those of you who don't know me. I've been in town for, I don't know, maybe 70, 70 some years. I've worked with, done a lot, I think, within this town. I used to have a restaurant up at Walgreens is now called the Sunnyside. Some of you gray haired people might remember it. Younger's ones never will. Had a couple used to come in there for lunch two or three days. They owned some property on South Pier Road. At the time, the town was looking for some land to build a school. Talked to them, they had just sold the property. Mari Luzis and I went to Cranston and met with them. I negotiated a price, and I bought the property that the middle school now sits on. Dominic Christopher came to me once. Our Little League field we lost at the end of Brown Street, we were playing at George C. He took me down the end of Prospect Street with, look at this place, which is a semi swamp, brought in some Phil, and he and I designed the present Little League field. Urban renewal, I was there for the entire situation of urban renewal. I was there for the, for the presentations.
Win, that's, that's going to have to move on. Sorry.
Lions Club of 54 years, food safety officer at Lions Club. And as a part, for any of you Christmas morning.
Ryan?
I put in the Christmas dinner for the Lions Club. Please come see me.
Thank you. I'm Ryan Torialde. Thank you for the NTRA for hosting us this, at this forum this evening, and thank you to the residents for coming out to be informed constituents. I am a former Boy Scout turned Eagle Scout, Troop Two, Narragansett. I have volunteered with the Narragansett Lions Club since I was 11, and I am a newly turned member of the Lions Club. I was a resident assistant in college, turned senior resident assistant. I bring a unique younger perspective as someone who has left Narragansett and as someone who has returned to Narragansett. I'm a project manager by trade. This has taught me not to be the smartest person in the room, but to surround yourself with the smartest people in the room. So in office, I would like to establish commissions that bring together members of our town who can bring thoughtful, you know, progressive policies for the benefit of our town, Narragansett. Thank you.
Donna?
I'm going to try to do this really fast. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you our plans and ideas for positions on the many issues facing the residents. I believe my expertise, my extensive experience and skills to bring together people and to bring together business owners and residents in various groups to initiate constructive discussion and foster compromise is something I can bring to this council. I believe that residents deserve high quality of life, and they need to feel valued and welcomed and feel like they're being listened to. We need to bring back the sense of community for Narragansett. I sit here today with five candidates that I genuinely have respect for, and I think we have, who respect me and we are willing to listen and learn from each other. And in, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it fast. And we believe in each other's point, point of views. I believe that we have a unique, I'm sorry, I'm just losing place in where I am because I'm trying to do this fast. I think it's exciting to see a team that has unique perspectives.
All right, thank you, Donna. I'm going to have to move on, I'm sorry.
Thank you again to the NTRA, to all of my fellow candidates, and most importantly, all of you who stayed throughout this wonderful experience for being here. I have two brothers who were born and raised into the Narragansett schools as well. You all supported my education, and I hope to return that favor by supporting you all as a member of the town council. A little bit more about my education background, I went to URI, graduated from URI with my bachelor's before going to Boston College, earning my master's. And as an individual, as a leader within this community, I believe we can only lead as well as we are able to have your input. I encourage the dialogue. We need greater transparency. We need to encourage those conversations to happen. In just a few short weeks, you will have the power to institute change. Your voice matters. We need to come together to protect the future of our town and our way of life. I will do everything I can to support all Narragansett residents in this town. You helped support me and my education growing up, and now I hope to return that favor. I respectfully ask for your support. Please visit votalexmenses.com for more information. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alex. Jill?
Every, every election has one issue that seems to be the key factor, and I think in this election is the short term rental. And we have two opposing sides. We have the incumbents, and then we have the slate of five candidates running against us. Narragansett has 33 students in a kindergarten. Our community is in jeopardy of losing our elementary school as investors, investors bid, outbid, continue to outbid families in our homes. I will fight to do whatever it takes to create policies to keep neighbors in our neighborhoods not transient visitors. It's about finding a bright balance, and I am determined to do so. This election is a key choice between real estate investment and community. I choose community. I ask that you vote for myself, my colleague Steve Ferande, and ever do this in the upcoming election.
Thank you, Jill. Rupert?
I'm lucky that my life brought me to live in this wonderful town. I'm concerned that the town is at a tipping point and risks becoming hollowed out as a community. I have the skills and experience to help the town navigate through our challenges. As those who have watched me on the planning board have seen, I do my homework. I come to meetings prepared. I've been following the council for past couple of years, so if elected, I can hit the ground running. 100 years from now, I want our grandchildren and their children to say, this is a wonderful place, instead of, this used to be such a wonderful place. How did this happen? Let's make the right decisions for the future we want for our town. Thank you for being here tonight.
Steve?
Narragansett residents, thank you for giving me the opportunity that was given to me by the voters in 2022. It's been a fulfilling experience to be involved in many aspects of the town that have many new residents. My platform running has been consistently on quality of life neighborhoods and policies to bring this to fruition. on quality of life neighborhoods and policies to bring this to fruition. My background includes engaging with many Narragansett neighborhood groups and discussing solutions to their issues. There are many competing interests in Narragansett, and sometimes difficult to strike a balance between groups. I believe the most important issue is keeping our full-time residents as a priority in the policies of the town. It's important that families have the opportunity to move into our town and continue the legacy of being a great community. And I respectfully ask for your vote in November for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
I had the speech planned, but it's not short enough. So I keep hearing the number 33. That's what I hear, 33, 33. We forget that above those level are many families that live in this community. And we are strong, and we are a community. And I, I just, it's disrespectful to, to, to put us down. We are out there every day, and we are out there doing sports. We are out there working, and we are out there trying to make this community the best it can be. When I walk these doors throughout all of these neighborhoods, I have angry people answering the doors because they're not being listened to. We need to listen harder to the whole community, and we need to get ourselves together. Thank you.
Ever?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to the organizers and the neighborhood groups, the candidates and the residents who are here tonight to listen to us. I am a daughter of Polish immigrants who came to this country to have a better life. They were factory workers in Pawtucket. I worked hard to get where I am today from the help of my family, and I am constantly trying to improve myself both professionally and personally, and continually take leadership courses to be able to better serve the community I so love. It's been an honor and privilege serving the town for the past four years on the council. I humbly request your vote on November 5th or before to reelect me for a third term to continue progress on important issues in our town. If reelected, I will continue to fight for our community and balance and quality of life in our town. Experience matters. Having candidates that can hit the ground running is so important, as there is so much more work to be done. For more information, please go to my website, voteforeva.com, or check out the Legal Women Voters insert in the papers.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you for your time today. As a lifelong resident of Narragansett, I've had the privilege of seeing this town grow, evolve, while still maintaining the unique charm that makes it so special. My family has been here for generations, and we've been part of this community for over 80 years, renting homes and contributing to local businesses. I've served three terms on the town council, and I'm proud of the work we've done extending the bike path into Narragansett, developing affordable housing for our seniors, and preserving landmarks like the towers. There's still much more to be done. We need to balance solutions for short-term rentals, regulations that protect residents without stifling the rental market that's been part of this town for decades. We must also ensure that affordable housing is available, but we can't lose sight of the balance that defines Narragansett's character. Parking and beach resiliency are two other important critical issues. I'm focused on practical, low-cost solutions like utilizing school parking lots and maintaining open channels in our waterways to keep our beaches and rivers accessible and thriving. This isn't just about next few years. This is about making sure that Narragansett continues to be a great place.
Thank you, Jim.
For future generations. I've been here all my life.
Thank you. I want to, I want to thank the candidates. First of all, I want to thank all of you, the audience, for your participation and your attention and your diligence. So basically, I want to thank our five questionnaires here, and of course, our diligent volunteers who are here today. But I think most of all, we all owe a debt of gratitude to these 10 people, some of who are serving and all the rest who want to be. They're, they're, they're all are commendable, and they're, well, I'm gonna just ask you to give them a round of applause, which they virtually deserve. And if, if, if they want to stand, take questions, and people want to listen, it's fine with us. So please do.